So we're all vaccinated. Bruce has had one shot, so he's almost there. So I'm just concerned about the spacing.
Okay, just FYI, we are live on YouTube right now?
There can be. I think they're allowed to come.
We don't have any spot on the agenda.
No, no, typically in a special meeting, you don't have. Well, anybody that like these are all right here.
What is it?
It's a really thing with old people's stuff. Stuff you might find convenient, but.
Emily, can you do me a favor? I have a different kind of microphone out there now. I was wondering if you could hear it.
I'm sorry, what? Huh? I can hear you very well. Okay, Dad, I gotta go. Love you. Bye. New Milford.
I put a, I put a microphone out there for the whole table.
You wanna sit?
And so I'm just wondering if y'all can hear it or not.
I can hear it beautifully.
Okay, Steve, could you say something?
Yes, hello out there, America. Yeah, it's coming through. Can you hear me?
Yes. Yes, I can. Thank you.
So if I turn this as well, can you see the whole board?
Yep. Yes. Hi, Steve.
Bruce, don't be shy unless you want to be shy because you don't want germs.
Hello, Winstead leaders.
Someone just said hi, Steve.
So we have Emily, Emily Olson and Shaw Isaacson from the newspapers are here.
Okay, very good.
And so this is the new director mic I bought.
Very nice.
Supposed to pick us up better.
That's great. I can hear everything. Thank you. I'm gonna mute myself so you don't have to listen to me anymore. Thank you.
We're missing Candace, right?
Yes, we just shouldn't listen to ourselves.
That was hurtful. The last time we did that, the pledge was hurtful.
Better to let one person do it.
You're right.
I'd always check the YouTube and stuff.
Yeah, I get a notification every time.
So far, two reporters are online. The only reporter I would expect would be Kirk. And then I don't know if anybody else is gonna.
We have people showing up. We'll just tell them.
Wear a mask if this is.
The sunroom. You have to come to the sunroom. Yeah.
No, just a regular cold inside.
I put it in the email.
It was.
Somebody else might come in. This is Brian Sunday. Brian, can you name yourself?
Yeah, sorry.
Hi, Dad. Also, people that are, people that just came on on Zoom, we have a new microphone in the middle of the table. Hopefully you all can hear us better. Let me know if you can't.
Cheating off your notes. Which year is it? You're getting a lot better than just beautiful.
There's a oh, selectmen are here. They're coming. Melissa's online. She always say no.
Thank you.
Looks like everybody's here. Melanie's supposed to be coming. Oh, sure. And, and then Tony was supposed to come in through either my phone or through Zoom. I'm not sure where he is. Somebody else is looking like they're coming in.
Yeah.
I can't, I can't get all of these quite all. I don't have another table to go backwards with. Okay, I'm gonna start the meeting. Okay, so welcome everybody to the special meeting of the Board of Selectmen on April 12th, 2021. We'll start with our call order as usual.
Candace Bouchard.
Todd Chalke. Melissa.
Melissa Byrd.
Melissa Byrd.
Candy Perez.
Sheila Sadlack.
Backboard. Steven Sadlack.
Linda Grapo.
Okay, great. Pledge of allegiance, please. Black's over there to the right. I pledge allegiance.
To the pride of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I can tell you in person, their pledge goes way back. Okay, everybody. So obviously, we're, we are here because we wanted to have a meeting in public for people to come and also for us to have a discussion in public. We are on Zoom and live stream trying a new microphone tonight. So I'm gonna try to make sure that we admitted everybody into the Zoom. I know Tony Saria wanted to come into Zoom and I also gave my cell phone number, but I don't see him here yet. Melanie's supposed to be coming in person. So tonight's meeting is strictly for the budget, for us to have a discussion as a board. I'm not expecting us to have any final decision tonight. I mean, obviously, we could if we wanted to, but we also, just by logistically, we have our regular meeting on April 19th, which is, of course, can be a budget item a week from now.
Sorry, I wasn't expecting.
Talk about things.
Just so you know, he's been out.
Chat, talk about.
Oh, yeah?
We can certainly do so if we need Bob and Bruce to.
When's your thing supposed to happen?
Could somebody?
Supposed to happen?
Somebody needs to mute themselves over there in Zoom land.
Okay, so why were you on it? Okay.
We're having a family. I'm gonna see if she muted herself.
Yeah.
No, not, not good enough.
Kristen, unmute. Mute yourself.
I just muted her. All right, I think we got people muted. Just because there's feedback coming from your background. Okay, so anyway, so where I was, was we have some time to do things, but two weeks, we have two weeks until April 23rd, as we've been saying all along, where our last decision has to be made by to give enough time within the charter to post everything. So at our last meeting, we had some, Bob told us some adjustments that he thought he would be able to make. We also, I also asked him if, you know, what would it take to go to like a no-mill increase? There was also concern on the school side that they needed their entire allotment. There was comments from the public. Some wanted to make sure that we met the school's allotment. Some were concerned about the mill rate increase and was talking about the federal and state funds. So we are letting one more person in. So where we are right now is I think Bob and Bruce did some work. And what I would like to ask the board to do is to think about the concepts as they explain to us what they're doing here. The concepts of not only what it means for this year, but what it means for the start of the budget season next year. If revenue does or doesn't come in, what kinds of things are we sending out into the future? Also, what do we, you know, what, what are we doing for investments in the town to help us move forward with what is proposed? So Bruce or Bob, do you want to start to go through?
Yeah, I'll start.
Excuse me, before I do, could it be noted on the record that I will not participate in any discussion or decision making about the school, the education budget?
Yes.
Sorry.
Oh, no, that's fine. Sorry, Ed. So Bruce is gonna come over. So there were a couple adjustments. I guess if you could just do it in this way, the adjustments you think that are definitely good to make based on what you, what's been updated information from either you be looking at the budget or state information or federal information? And then separate out what you propose if you wanted to go to a no-mill rate increase.
All right, this is based upon the no-mill rate increase. So we've got some information in front of you there. There were a slight adjustment in revenues, which you can see on line A, based on some adjustments we've had on anticipated revenues, everything from Board of Assessment Appeals to reassessment of where we are. There's a, an increase of $8,000 in the fund balance assigned. We had 100,000 before. It's 108,000 now. The revenue, and we'll talk about the schools piece. Melanai had been talking and she's here tonight. She can talk more about that. There's a $200,000 adjustment there, but let me conclude the rest so I can explain that. The Water and Sewer Administration, there was a $10,000 pickup there as we analyzed that. The probate court, we had to add $360 in expense to that. And then on this, there's two lines that it says highways. We actually put $40,000 into the highway budget for Main Street maintenance, which we really reversed out $40,000 in their salt budget, which was 230,000, which we thinks, we think we're in pretty good shape. You never are sure about salt until February of the following season, but we believe we're okay there. And unnegotiated settlements, we actually increased that from 60,000 to 64,000, four and a half thousand. The capital budget, we reduced by $125,000. We took $50,000 out of storm drains around the lake and we took $25,000 out of the Soldiers Monument Fund, which was at 50. Town Support for Education, I have to explain that line a little bit there. We were, we're at 730,000, which was 480 from last year. We increased it another 250. And then if Mel would agree to 200,000 from, from their, their fund, from their unused portion from the past two years, that would increase the total on that line item for town supportive education to 930,000. There was one adjustment that had to be made to the police annuity fund of $497. But overall, the only, this brings us to a zero increase. It's, Mel had asked for 531,000. We have contributed 250 to that end. Mel believes that she might be able to do 200. That leaves it $81,000 short. That was the only unresolved piece that could be addressed or discussed. But right now, this, this, these adjustments bring us back to a zero-mill increase.
So Bruce, do you want to talk about what that means for next year?
All right, so on this worksheet that you have in front of you, the lines R5 and R6, which are the bottom two lines in the revenue section. Excuse me, R4 and R5. Both of those represent draws from the fund balance. We don't normally draw from the fund balance. We do when there is one-time expenditures and line R4 is one of those. We expect to have a unusually large requirement to pay out for some accumulated balance for some projected retirements. We do not expect that to repeat. So we can go into general fund balance and pull out some dollars to help us with that. The second one, R5, is a proposed draw on the Port of It's non-lapsing account balance, part of the general fund balance. The when you do that, then you have you're projecting to use a certain level of expenditures for this year and funding that partially out of, of the fund balance. But next year, if those expenditures stay there, then the question is, is do you pull that out, that increase out of the fund balance or is it not there to be pulled? Now, do you build in a, an expenditure level that is not supported by general fund recurring revenues? Which would be your tax, property taxes and municipal grants from the state, et cetera. So that's one of the dangers about tapping into the fund balance. It's not always available for you to do in following years when you've built in a, an increase into your expenditure budget.
And the other thing that, that's happening out of fund balance is, can you talk a little bit about the money that you're taking out for capital? Because there's a, when we first got the capital fund, there's a expenditure of 500 and something thousand dollars out of fund balance. So now we're, we're up to over six, almost 700,000 coming out of fund balance. And, and with the reductions that you have proposed here for the 50,000, the 25,000 and taking an additional 50,000 on the fund balance. If we wanted to go and do capital items again next year and don't have the fund balance to do it, then what happens?
Well, then you're, you're, you're faced with either finding revenues from the taxpayers to fund those, that capital, those capital expenditures. As you mentioned, our capital expenditure budget over the recent years has always drawn some money out of the fund balance to kind of meet that total capital expenditure plan. And that is acceptable because you're basically asking for a one-time expenditure for a capital project. This year, our we are proposing to use $574,000 of fund balance for capital projects. That's a rather large draw. We haven't done that very frequently. That's a large one. But it takes advantage of how the, the growth in the fund balance that happened over the last several years when the general fund operating budget has been underspent. So that money drops into the fund balance or the savings account, and now we're going back into the savings account and proposing to take some of that money off for capital projects, which generally don't recur. So but as the mayor mentioned, is that when you talk about the capital draw out of the fund balance plus the, what's in the line.
And you're only asking for, where you really need it, the 531. So if we use this 200 from the non-lapsing account.
Yes. One, I want to say I'm a little disappointed in the language that being used of proposal of taking money out of the non-lapsing account. That account is owned by the Board of Education, not the Board of Selectmen. So I can't have you been a conversation about how much or a number without my board's support of that number, which I don't have a meeting with them regarding this till next Tuesday. So I can't.
This is a proposal. We, this, there's no decisions at this.
I understand, but that money is allocated through the Board of Education.
We understand that.
So I just want to be really crystal clear that I cannot give you any solidified information regarding that.
Okay, well, that's, I think, one of, I think a lot of it hinges upon being able to do this for this year. So that's why I'm asking you this question is because last week I was confused. And then I thought, you know, we had a conversation. It seemed to be that this is where we're headed, but if we're not headed this way, this board needs to know that.
I still find that you're responsible to create a clip for next year. We have not had a tax increase. We have not had an educational increase that is supporting the amount that we need at this point. We knew a year ago that we had a $500,000 deficit that was gonna be facing us because of lots of, lots of commissioners' network. I still think it's irresponsible to create this clip for next year because my minimum ask next year is gonna be over one mill.
Let, let me also state, we're providing a new school. We're rebuilding Hinsdale and there's also $170,000 in this budget for the preliminary expense for Hinsdale. So I just don't want people to think we haven't been supporting education. This is a pretty big deal.
That's not my message that there's not support for education. Please don't hear that message. What I'm advocating though is for the right amount of money to support education. That's what I'm advocating. I know it's blocking the historic trend in this town to ask for an increase. But you guys have never heard me push back as hard as I'm pushing back right now because I know what our kids need and I know where we're at educationally. And I'm at my bare bones of what I am asking for right now, like down to the dollar. I know what I'm asking for.
I, I know.
So what I can tell you is that if there is a number that you would like me to take back to my Board of Education for consideration and deliberation, I'm happy to be able to oblige that. But I can't sit here and give you an answer.
Okay, so as I started this meeting, I said none of our decisions had to be final today. So obviously, they will definitely not be final today. Let me just let somebody else into the meeting. We're back in. Okay, so, so this is a preliminary sheet that he's given us. So I guess I would ask the board then, where do we want to go? Where do you want to go? What do you think either about the items on here or just the general, overall concepts of a mill increase or no-mill increase? The items on here, obviously, if we fund education with more money, as is being asked of us, and we don't use that lapsing account, then the money has to come from somewhere. Money always has to come from somewhere. Either new money or existing money. So I guess I throw that out to the board right now, where we are on things. See?
I'll speak. I'll just say that, you know, I only use the term historic trends. And it does seem as though we've been very frugal, very conservative with our money over the years, with the taxpayers' money. You know, to the point where there really hasn't been any mill increase over, I think it's five of the last six years. And so we've entered this budget season, looking at a budget on March 15th, which called for a 0.4% increase to the mill rate for taxpayers. And then two weeks later, it had been pared down to a 0.2%, no, I'm sorry, a 0.2 mill increase for the taxpayers. And now we're talking about no-mill increase for the taxpayers. So there isn't, there's definitely a trend here. Now, as we look ahead, you know, I, I was somewhat reassured by the sewer and water presentation last week. It seems as though we're not on a bad hook there. I think you used the term, you know, cosigner. And, and I think that's the position we'll be in. So I'm not terribly worried about the water and sewer issues going forward. But we have, you know, a school renovation that's gonna be on the, on the tab. And I don't have a clear, a clear understanding at this point as to how much that school is going to cost. And I don't, is Bruce, Bruce, are you prepared to talk generally about what happens over the next several years? So the the bids that came in on the school, correct my numbers.
Sure.
The low bidder came in at, I think, 12 million and change with all of the.
With something with all the inclusions.
With all the inclusions, I think it was 13 million or something.
And then with all the soft costs and contingencies, but in phase one, phase two, and phase three included, come down to 15.3 million.
Right, 15.3 million.
Which right now, with 71% reimbursement rate, the cost of the town is about 4.6 million, which is significantly less than originally.
And with some, I think I projected out that if all those costs come in where we estimate them at right now, that the bond issue that would be required would be about 4.3 million.
Which is how much a year?
Instead of, the referendum, when we presented it, the referendum question was looking at 9.9 million dollars of borrowings for the town share of the project. And that seems to have been cut almost in half, which will tend to reduce, you know, the cost to the town and debt service going forward. And it may about I don't want to quote a number, but the current debt service we have for the bond that is retiring in two years will be pretty much sufficient to carry that 4.3. 4.3 million, that's a big, a big drop. And boy, good for us.
Absolutely.
But there's other dozen groves.
Well, no, I, I'm just trying to get the feel for going forward, what's the impacts on the tax.
Internal forecast for the next, was it four years, five years?
Five years.
Five years?
Are for the general fund budget are headed over the next five, between one and as high as 7% per year, like the benefit. And so it's, it's unavoidable. Including a modest increase in town support for education. There are, you know, there's, and anticipating that there's only a modest increase in the grand list every year. We typically see about a 1% increase in the grand list every year. Allowing for that, we see that there's going to need to be mill rate increases every year. This is, this would be the last year that we can possibly try to go for no-mill rate increase. I mean, it's just. I mean, it's just, we've been holding back things for a while, but now it's just that we're running out of, you know, capacity to absorb these cost increases with our present mil rate. So these, these mil rates, you know, go up generally somewhere between half and one mil per year over the next five years.
Well, that's the kind of information I'm looking for because, you know, frankly, looking backward, there's been, there's been practically no impact in terms of the mil rate rising. Now you've got something that's a little more predictable that's on the table. So when you look at all of the factors we're looking at, you know, what I'm trying to decide for myself is, you know, is this the time where we need to just do that 0.2 or 0.4% mil increase to meet the needs that the town departments have identified? So, um, you know, I, I don't know if this is the point at, at which we make that, take that step or not. But that, that's significant stuff, Bruce. Are, is that going to be in a form that we can look at?
We will have it soon.
Okay.
Well, that's a dilemma, isn't it, Steve? I mean, I think, I think, you know, you and I have been here, Candace too, when we've had these dilemmas before. We've been very fortunate over the past four years to not have so much of a dilemma because of the good work that the schools have done, the good work that Bob and Bruce have done. But we certainly have struggled with budgets before this in terms of what's in here, what's not in here. You know, what do we keep? What do we, that increase? Uh, so this struggle is, is something we haven't had to do in a while, and now here we are. Anybody else on the board? Have any questions to our thoughts?
This is minor, but you have 40,000 for Main Street. Is there any work that's going to be done this year?
I've got three purchase orders on my desk right now. I'd like to show them to you. Yeah, they're ready to start now.
Cause I don't know that the 40,000, I think the 40,000 might be too high going forward.
It might be, it might be 10 grand.
But it can always go back into public works.
Right.
Right, okay.
Is that 40,000's worth starting July 1st?
Correct, that's why I was asking what was being worked on this year.
I still got something left for, to start this year. You know, basic things, mulching in the islands, things like that.
But it's important to note that that didn't shift anything. You just created a new line within the department using existing money. There was no up or down on that.
Correct.
It's important to know because up or down affects everything. At this point, any up or any down, Melanie?
He's going to decline my question, but. I'd like to know where each of the Board of Selectmen stand on this particular budget. We've had several budget meetings today, and I've heard only from two people. And I'd like to know where everybody stands.
I think I told you last week that this is what this deliberation, liberation is for.
Not hearing voices or deliberation around it.
It's only 5:30.
And I know.
It's a little early, it's only, it's only 5:30, people gotta warm up.
It's such a critical discussion and I just hope to understand all sides to be able to make the best decision I possibly can without a limit, without assuming that I know what someone else's voice is. I think it's critical to understand everyone's stance. It's just, and feel free to ignore my commentary if you don't want to talk.
I'd be more than happy to speak. I, um, you know, I was here before when we stopped, you know, early on in 2015, where we refused to give the school any more money because the school finances were so screwed up. Um, the budget that was given to us to approve was absolutely unbelievable. And the work that you've done and the recognition you have for managing the funds, I have confidence that we, where you're fully accountable to it and they are true figures and our audits show that. I am, um, I am definitely willing to increase the MBR because we're seeing a consistent level of, of funding needs in the past five years. I mean, we started off with the, uh, $100,000 for none, as a way to help beat budget requirements in the not, and then we increased it to 50, to 480, and now we're up to this amount. I mean, I definitely think that there's a proven track record and also expense that's needed to be addressed. Um, and I feel confident in making that going forward. I do understand the, um, the, the money that was given to the town to help write the schools and that those grants are coming to an end. I totally acknowledge that. So I, I'm definitely for, for changes to the school budget. I don't know the exact amount to agree to, to keep in non-lapse, not, not lapsing, but for educational purposes versus the MBR. That's where I stand for that. I am very concerned about the roads. Um, and that's definitely a serious discussion we have to have this year with all the residents, with a, a solid plan and how to address our infrastructure. Uh, we haven't been able to do that. We're at a point we must do that going forward.
I'll speak. You know, this is a lot of information and I know we've, you've worked very hard for a long time on the budget. Um, I, I'm surprised, um, you give out the tax collector's information every few months. And even during the pandemic, this, how people are paying their taxes, there's only $786,000 in arrears for real estate. People are paying their taxes. I'm impressed. And when you do the math at a 0.2% increase for the mil rate, is that the correct?
Point.
Point two.
First I did a point four and you asked me to go back and went to point two and you asked me to go back to about zero.
A big increase. I don't think people complain about a mil increase when they see work being done on the roads or services being offered at the schools. I, it's been a flat for a number of years. We need services. We need to be progressive. We need to move on. It's time. We've seen what's happened when we don't move forward, what's happened to the roads, what's happened to the schools, what's happened to our town. Um, I think it's time we start paying forward.
Can anybody hear me? I'm sorry.
Oh, Melissa, go ahead.
Okay, I just wanted to say.
Talk as loud as you can, please.
Okay, I'm yelling, but I'm in the car, so I'm not sure. Um, I want to say that I really support the education budget as well. Um, I believe that as we consistently improve, we will have, you know, that paid back to us. Like the, the town is going to improve as the schools continue to improve. I think that Melanie's done a great job with her budget. It's, she's always accountable. So, um, I don't know. I guess what I would ask is, obviously this would be a great year not to have an increase with the, you know, all of the stuff with the COVID and everything else. But, and I know you've already, you know, done the numbers for the different increases, but what would the increase be for, um, to fulfill the education budget while maintaining kind of thing without? I, I mean, I, I hear from Melanie and that the lapsing account isn't where that should. I mean, I guess I would agree with Candace. I mean, I, I also don't think we have to stay at the MBR forever. So I don't know.
She's asking what's the, what's the impact of 281,000?
Yeah.
One mil is 750, call it. All right, so.
Okay.
You got a number, Bruce? You want to go quicker than me?
One mil by. Hundred and, point four, that's where I started.
Yeah.
So 785,000?
If I divide 281 by seven.
Right.
Seven thirty-seven.
Seven thirty-seven?
Seven thirty-seven.
Point three eight? So it's a point three eight, everybody.
I also think schools should go on capital improvement plan too. After. We're all set up. Not this year. I'm not asking, no.
So if, if we, if you, uh, before I keep going, Todd, Jeff, anybody want to say anything?
I would like to fully support Mel's request. But at the same time, I also have serious concerns. The state budget does not necessarily at all times help Winston, Winchester. Sometimes it does. But there's also taxes that the state may or may not be seeking, including the one mil increase on property over $300,000. That's a large portion of Highland Lake, Winchester Center. That's also on all commercial property. That's not necessarily going to pass, but we do have the regional gas tax, which could be, the average Connecticut family with two drivers driving 23,000 miles a year, 1,000 gallons of gas would be about $254 extra a year for each family. And the big, um, elephant in the room, we're not done with the pandemic yet. In December 2020, when, just Winston's unemployment rate was 7.7%. Latest numbers are for February 2021, and Winston's unemployment rate is 9.1%. Granted, tax collection has been phenomenal last year, but if things stay as they are, can that continue? So I'm not sure that I can support a mil increase, but I think there may be ways that, you know, we, we make a couple of cuts here to try to get Melanie most of what she has requested and not completely decimate the town services, which when you look at it, you know, Melanie, you have what? 1,100 students? You know, there's also 7,000, about 7,100 residents in the town that we have to make sure that we can support them and their needs as well. So it, it's a fine line this year. Hopefully things go back to normal and our grand list increases and businesses are, are fully open and able to make their tax payments. You know, if you do look at Main Street, there are some businesses open, opening up. And hopefully that continues. But it's, it's a very difficult choice. You know, if we don't do it this year, what happens next year? If we, you know, make the increase this year and things get worse, where does that put us next year? Do we have to cut services next year because we, um, you know, overthought and, and weren't fiscally responsible? And that, that's sort of where I am right now. You know, I, I want to support Mel's budget, um, but at the same time, I have concerns.
Jack, it's you.
You know, even in good times, nobody likes to pay more taxes. We've seen that so many times in this town. Even when population figures were increasing, grand list was increasing, the unemployment rate was low, nobody would pay more taxes. We'd always come to meetings before I was on the board and people would say, no, can't pay more. So there's always going to be negativity about any type of tax increase. That negativity in good times and bad times is a natural because we can't do anything about what we pay the federal government, very little to the state. But here it's all personal. It's the road I ride on. It's the schools that my kids go to. It's the condition of the buildings on Main Street. It's the conditions of the cemeteries. These are all personal things and we want to get involved in them. My difficulty is twofold here. First, I am tired of seeing increases in the town support for education. I would much rather be realistic and put that money, if it's needed, in the educational line item. But with this new proposal of even adding now going up to $900,000 in town support for education, I don't think that's a realistic figure. Let's just say we're going to increase the MBR, be realistic if we're going to do these things. I don't want to pay more taxes. I don't want the, the tax rate to go up if we don't have to. And in looking at the, the proposed budgets from the Board of Education, I don't have anything to do with, other than one line item. The line item that town support for education and of course, the, the standard line item. So how the budget is deleted, added to, is strictly up to the nine members of the Board of Education. We have a responsibility, I think, our board, because we're elected to be the spokesman for the finance of this town, as we sit here as the finance board, is up to us to be realistic to what are the conditions that the 7,000 plus taxpayers in this town are facing. Realistically, if the unemployment rate continues, if the impact from coronavirus continues, we're putting a lot of our good citizens and taxpayers in a very difficult situation. I support education, always have, and I support the continuation of good money to education. I want to go back to something that Bob had presented to us and I had asked at the last meeting for a little bit more clarification, and I'm still not sure. I have some questions and maybe some of, maybe some of the answers are in this spreadsheet that we just got a couple of hours before our meeting. But in the March 15th presentation to the board, the budget presentation indicated that the increases that we were going to be seeing was at that point, six, 600,000, 660,000. That was way back at the March 15th presentation, when you gave that, that sheet out. I looked at those figures from back then, and I also, that was when you were proposing the 0.4 mil increase. You have since that time added more money back in. And so because I didn't have a chance to work the figures out, um, just getting this spreadsheet this afternoon, I still would like to think through this. As, as Bruce has said, if, if we take money as you're proposing now from the general fund, it still leaves 18.3% and we can go down to 16.7%. So there is an increase, I guess, here that we can work towards. And my feeling is if we're going to work towards this increase, we could keep additional money in the education budget, but in the MBR area. And I would not propose doing anything different to the town support for education. I would also look at other reductions that can be made in the town government's expenses. And again, I worked these figures out from the March 15th presentation and the numbers that were given then. And at that point, just taking $175,000 from the general fund and reducing the, uh, support for education and reducing town government, we could pay this budget without a tax increase. Well, I think there's still more work to be done here and since this is more of a thought meeting as opposed to the decision meeting, my, my feeling is I don't think this is a year that we can support even a 0.2% increase in taxes. I understand those repercussions. Next year may be better. Next year we may have a bigger grant list. As you may have seen and the newspapers have reported, more people are moving to northwestern Connecticut. More people are buying houses, bigger houses, improvements on their houses. We've seen that whenever we have our finance committee meeting, one of the increases that we always see is the building department numbers and the, the money from the tax, from the town clerks when they have to file the information about putting up new buildings or new houses or improvements. We've got a couple more weeks to think through this, but I certainly don't want to see us making reductions in things that will affect people immediately, roads, drainage, schools. I'd like to see other ways that we can continue to be a very responsible finance board to the taxpayers by keeping at this time and this year, this 21, 22 tax years, from my position, no increase in taxes. There will be increases in taxes for peoples who assessments go up, understand that, but no increase in the tax rate. I think it can be done with a little bit more thought, a little bit more maybe use of the general fund balance. I don't have any difficulty bringing that GF back down to the 16.7 or even 16%. That is, is a, is a more of a suggested amount. You go through other towns, they're well below that. So why are we so insistent upon keeping it there and then not funding the things that get to be needed? I'm still looking at numbers. I'm still interested in seeing what else we can do, but from my position, I can't support a tax rate increase. I can't support a total budget as asked for by the Board of Education or as been asked for by the town manager. I think we could still make some suggested deductions and still get us in front of a budget that says we are supportive of town improvements, but we're also supportive of the taxpayers and their requirements. We've got a couple more weeks. I'd like to see another meeting and we will certainly will, and I'd like to see some other clarification of some numbers.
Jack, can I ask you about the 175,000 from the grand list to solve the hole? Where would you apply that to in the budget?
From the I missed the first part of that.
The $175,000 you mentioned from the fund balance, where would you put that money? Where are you suggesting to help fill the holes?
I'm not sure yet. That's part of that, I'm not giving a finger point to it. I'd say that person over there needs to be able to look at some of those issues.
But you realize that the use of 170, any money from the fund balance is for a one time use.
And it's going to bring the fund balance down to a figure of, another, there's a $550,000 difference between 18.3 and 16.7. So if that fund balance was used to, to offset a tax increase, that to me is what people have given, what we have saved money for. In my house, I save money. I don't buy everything, but when I need to buy something, I can go to my savings account. Isn't that what that is?
But you're not, it's, that's buying something, not a service. So you can use a fund balance to buy something like a, a car.
Well, you can use the fund balance to, to support the entire budget. You don't have to put it into one particular line.
No.
You have to take it and put it in one line?
It's a, it's, no, it's a one Yeah.
Recurring.
So not an operational expense.
I understand it.
So, so where I think we are is what everybody wishes not to do, which is raise taxes, is going to make us go in and look at all the line items. I've done this like a thousand times before. So you can't take it, you can't, like, there's no magic money coming. So we're going to have to look at things. There's a couple of things that, that I think about. One of the things that hasn't been mentioned here is the Gilbert School and I don't know where Tony is and what, you know, I gave him my phone number and stuff, he didn't come in. But remember, one of the things that we're doing, we're not only carrying the town and our own schools, we're also carrying, and Steve, if you want to chime in at all, within the budget, we're also carrying your infrastructure as well. So we have lots of infrastructure. We have no guarantee that on July 1st, where if we reduce the schools, that we're going to get a reduction on the Gilbert side because Gilbert can set the tuition because there's been no legislative change as of yet. I looked on the state website and there doesn't seem to be anything that's going to help the town at the moment unless our representatives can, can move some legislation, the town's going to be back in the same spot with the, with the tuition. There's just no two ways about it. So we have to keep that on the back burner because if that one comes in on July 1st with a bigger number like it did in 2019, then what are we going to do? You know, because that's going to be an issue if that were to come in at this time. The second thing is, is that, you know, if you take the money out of fund balance, then there will be no money next year. If you take a higher rate this year, there'll be no money to cover any kind of thing without getting below the recommended audit amount. And Bruce, one of the things that I've talked with you about in the past, could you talk, talk a little bit about credit rating and now that we're going to be going bonding sewer, I mean financing, financing water and bonding Hinsdale, what the reduction in fund balance budgets, et cetera, have on our, our ratings?
So as you know, we, the town lost its rating in 2013 and we only obtained it back in 2019 after we were presented the fiscal 19 results to the credit rating agencies and Moody's at that point saw that our fund balance had improved substantially. We were, you know, at the 16.7% recommended and they gave us, that's one of the factors they used in order to give us an A1 rating, which the town now has and will assist us in able to go to market for, you know, for bonding. The town has a great deal of borrowing capacity under the state laws and because the town has almost, has very little debt, we haven't been in the debt market and we're paying things off, but we have quite a bit of borrowing capacity, which makes, you know, borrowing for the Hinsdale project.
Couple of years, instead of paying finance costs for the equipment that we're buying, we're self-funding it. So with a healthy fund balance, we're actually saving interest rate dollars by being able to pay for the equipment and then pay ourselves back over those three years worth of the lease. And also you have money to be able to pay off, pay upfront contractors to do work, whether it's a bridge, whether it's a road, whether it's, you know, even Hinsdale going forward until you either get the money from a bond or financing. Can you talk a little bit about how you use fund balance that way?
Yeah, so your fund balance is a pretty much, gives you what you have in terms of your, it's, it's represented by a cash balance in your cash accounts. And as the mayor was saying, our treasurer has been able to use a relatively healthy cash balance in order to make payments on equipment, which if we didn't have the cash, we would have to go to the credit markets and borrow for these capital leases at rates which are not that attractive, five, six, seven percent, even for municipal markets. So we can only earn about 20 basis points, you know, less than half a percent on our idle cash. When we buy equipment without having to finance it at five and six percent, we're essentially earning that interest as a savings interest expense. Money state grant projects for infrastructure like Lanson Road Bridge and the Sucker Brook Bridge and West Road Bridge, all of those things are reimbursable grants. And so you have to spend the money first before you submit the payments that you've made to the state in order to get the reimbursement. And so we essentially funded the entire Lanson Road Bridge, which is about $800,000, that little culvert bridge that, just amazing how much these things cost. But we paid for that ourselves before we eventually got the state share. So that's one of the things that a robust fund balance gives you the opportunity to do. Otherwise you'd have to wait and waiting for infrastructure projects always seems to drive up the cost. And so again, that's another benefit for keeping a, you know, a healthy fund balance. And, and I think it's one of the reasons why the town ended up getting a very favorable rating a couple of years ago from the Aki Institute. We were one of the top, we were the top 10% of all towns in terms of our financial standing of the towns in Connecticut. So I, I tend to be conservative that way. I like to have a very safe fund balance level. I know we've been building it up, but what we're trying to do in this budget is take what our excess fund balance is and turn it back into infrastructure repairs, infrastructure investment. And that's why the budget that Bob has proposed involves pulling about, let's see, $574,000 out of the fund balance for, to support the capital, the capital budget.
We've done that before.
Yeah, we've done it and, and again, it's a, it's pretty, it's a significant draw. I think we did one where a couple of years ago where we did 600,000. That was to allow for highway departments to do a lot of road work around town. So this capital budget is mostly, has some infrastructure, but there's a lot of engineering costs involved in this budget to set up the town for when the, when funding may become available from the state and the federal government, that you actually have projects that are already designed and can show to be, and you can take advantage of those kind of grant opportunities.
All right, so I'm going to shift gears a little bit. One of the things that was mentioned on the other end of the table is maybe taking a look at inside our departments and inside the town just general budget, because if we're going to give more money to schools than we currently have slated, I think we're all committed to the 250. I don't think there's anybody at the table that wants to do anything with that 250. So I think it's just a difference between 250 and the 580. But if we were to do that and we were to look at the departments, Bob or Bruce, could you talk about the finance department, the assessors department? Because those are the only two departments that I could see significant increases in. Everything else looks about the same. I know in the assessors office, it's about a part-time to full-time.
Let me talk, you could talk about that, I'll talk about the assessor.
Yeah, so in the finance department, we, at the end of, over the spring of last year, I think when there was a vacancy in the, in the, on the Board of Ed side in terms of their payroll person, we tried to combine that payroll function with our payroll function and with the new software implementation on the Board of Ed side, and it just became too complicated for our payroll person to manage. So we, we tried it for about six months and it just didn't, it just wasn't working. So we had to go back. And that's why we had, we had proposed a cut, a, a share of the Board of Education reversing the, the town finance department for that work. And that was in the fiscal 21 budget. And since that isn't going to be in place, that's the primary reason why the finance department, Department 114's budget grew so much this year, because we're back to having our payroll person handle our payroll work. The Board of Ed has hired their own payroll person.
In terms of the assessment, my evaluation in the past couple of years leads me to believe that we are, have not applied assessment rules equitably and sufficiently in many cases. I think, even though I think many towns fall into the habit of doing what we always did and in many cases as the state rules have changed, and I think we have, have been missing some, some tax assessments which we should be receiving. The rules have gotten a little more complicated. We're getting ready to go in a revow next year, which is going to be very complex and I don't want to miss the opportunity. I believe we were sort of leaving money on the table with the processes that we've been using. So we had an opportunity through some job changes to bring in more professional assessment and that's what we've done. In my opinion, those increases will more than pay for themselves and that's a management decision based on evaluation and I, Bruce and I have talked about it and we spent some time in the assessment office and we've been making some changes and we're already seeing increases as a result of that. As Jack said earlier, no one likes to pay more taxes, but I want to make sure everyone who's paying the taxes, they should be paying. So we've been kind of hard-nosed about that recently and we've been making sure we're enforcing those rules and regulations more stringently and will continue to do so in the future. I can't put a number on it, but I will tell you it's going to be more than offset the increase that we're asking for in the assessment office.
So in the other departments, when I went through comparing this year to last year, I didn't see big swings except in the medicals, on the medical, the health insurance side. So where else could we get this money if we wanted to shift it over to education?
Well, I mean, the biggest departments, two biggest departments we have are public works. Within public works, I mean, the major expenditure happens to be on the roads and equipment related to the roads, labor related to the roads. So it's, it's that area within that department. The other large department is the police department and most of those expenses are related to personnel. So I mean, that's, that begs the question, you know, one officer costs about $90,000 all in with fringes and all benefits and overtime pay and so forth. So I've got two departments where it matters. If you want to try to pick out a few thousand out of this department, a few thousand out of that, we can come up with some of the money, but the big pieces are in public works and the police department. But we can go back and try to grind out 5,000 here, 10,000 there and come up with some money. There's no doubt about that. All budgets are, are anticipated projection of costs, you know, I mentioned earlier in the, the evening about $230,000 in salt. We can have a real good year, you know, with the warming trends and not spend all of that. Maybe a little less on sand, but if, if we miss, you know, I've got to find that money from somewhere else. So we try to use the best educated knowledge that we have on a lot of expenditures that are not labor. Labor's predictable, we can count that and figure that. Non-labor expenses, public works are big and we don't know how to predict all of those. Again, overtime enters that picture. Every time we have one less snowstorm, when I see a plow truck going on a road with 13 plow trucks and 13 routes, I see dollar bills going out the exhaust pipe. So every time we don't have a snowstorm, I know we're spending, we're saving money or spending less. So we don't know how to predict those kinds of expenses exactly, but I think we've got enough historical knowledge to do it pretty well. Public Works Department, I think, does a pretty good job in that regard, but those are the areas where larger chunks of money would be had.
And those are reoccurring. So we would match reoccurring for reoccurring. Right? So if we cut something out of departments, we're matching the reoccurring money to go to a reoccurring expense.
That makes sense in that regard.
Yeah, so we matching reoccurring to reoccurring. What would happen if, and, and when I looked at the capital, the capital request, there was about 260 something coming from state aid, right? To 90, to 60, something like that from state aid, another 87 from LoSiP, and then there was the 530 something from fund balance, which only left $485,000. Which only left four hundred and eighty five thousand dollars coming from tax money. If you took the fund balance and you supplanted the tax money, then you would have more tax money to put somewhere else. But then next year in the capital account, there would only be. Two hundred and eighty five thousand or so for anything to run through capital. And we already know that our committed capital is already higher than that, correct? So we would start next year if we did that. We either have to pay for. The thing now, so we don't have to pay for it next year, but we couldn't make it pay for a truck that goes over three years. We couldn't make it for a police car that goes over three years. We couldn't make it for the payloader that goes over three years unless we just pay it straight out in in this budget. But so we would be taking money from a one-time capital, pushing it over from tax money into a reoccurring account. So the capital again would would be down, is that correct?
Now, I would tell you, over the past five years, we've replaced a lot of bad equipment. So we've climbed out of the hole, but you have to maintain that in order not to slide back. Into the hole again, so so we build a schedule, which I don't think is is profligate in any way. We're replacing really bad equipment that costs us a lot of money to maintain with newer equipment, but we we've cut down the amount of that. Now than we used to spend, but. It's a judgment call.
Can I share about public safety dispatch? You're showing a savings of eighty four thousand dollars.
Yes.
Is that real?
Yes.
So.
If you, we went to LCD.
Correct.
Dispatchers are really down to two. They anticipated could be less than that.
But this includes LCD and internal dispatch of every time?
Yes.
Okay, so it's not, there's not another.
No, not another secret cost behind that.
No, oh no, there's not another line item in a different category.
Right.
So at this point, I would ask everybody to identify what it is they'd like to change. And have Bob and Bruce look at it.
Bob, can I ask you a question regarding the spreadsheet that we received today? If if we follow this spreadsheet, the town managers propose April twelfth. You'd still need a point two percent?
No, this is zero.
Okay. But it's two hundred thousand.
But it's two hundred thousand, which.
Is in our.
In dispute. It's in the non-lapsing fund.
So you need two hundred thousand from somewhere.
One thing that I would like to be able to just walk away with on the education side of things is. An ask to be able to go to my Board of Education so that I can have an informed conversation with them. About the direction and finances. So that would just be an ask that I have so that I can have an informed conversation with them.
So when you say we'd like, you would like us to ask that?
If you. If you think that you are going to go above the two fifty. Let me know what that number is, and then I'm gonna need to work on my board and I'm gonna have to have a conversation with Gilbert.
That's up to you all. I don't think that's up to me.
About how we can share in that area.
Well, I mean, I'm I'm still confused by this particular conversation based on last week's conversation, to be honest with you all. So. No matter how this happens, we're the. If we we have two fifty for education, is everybody on the board, the Board of Selectmen, good with the two fifty that's in there right now?
Yeah.
Yeah, anybody?
And added to the four eighty.
Correct. Well, I didn't say where to, because I think putting money over on fund balance may also be a negotiating point here, just an FYI. So everybody here is good with two fifty, so now we're looking at the spread difference, right? From the request to where we are. So if we're looking at like two eighty one, and whether whether the schools take it from their non-lapsing account. That they have at the end of the year that we gave them, that we gave them permission to have to keep, right? They still will have that same hole next year, because I don't see that the state's gonna give us a whole lot of more money. I could be wrong, maybe they will. They still may have the hole next year with still restrictions on COVID money, grant money, all that. And our grant list growth has only been about two, two fifty a year. So we start, we we will, we have, if they use that non-lapsing account, it's like taking it from fund balance again. It's gonna be there next year, that whole little hole is gonna be sitting there waiting to be filled in next year. If we take it from our own fund balance, the eighteen percent, that hole will still be there. So we could take it from two other places, there won't be a hole. One, additional taxes, or two, off the expenses that are currently in on the town side. Because that's the only places they can all come from. And two sources will create a hole. The other two sources will create a cut or a tax. Because there's no other way to do math. This is a mathematical problem, this isn't a like a what everybody wants to do problem, it's not what everybody. You know, it is. Is around, I mean, we have people on the outside yelling, don't give us more taxes. We have people yelling, give education more money. We have people saying we need to have good equipment. We we have all sorts of things coming, and this is the, this is the the most uncomfortable part. One of the most uncomfortable parts of decisions that we have to make. But please look at it as a math equation, not what you want to do, not what you think could happen. But if you're gonna have a zero, then you need to make a. Or make a hole. Or transfer money. So it would be helpful to know exactly where. To get this money from.
But last year, Fairfield created a hole, now their hole's eight hundred thousand dollars. If you go look at other towns that use the pandemic money for other purposes, and and so now they have a hole in their budget of eight hundred thousand. Or I I think their their proposal's like eight percent increase for their 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 town because of a hole they created a year before.
I hate to identify with that, I can't imagine creating that kind of hole, but they did it.
But they did it, it's in the paper, so it's a reality.
I saw in the paper, Bruce, or Bob maybe, got it corrected too. If we stayed with a two percent or point two percent increase, right? It was my.
Point two mil.
I'm sorry, point two mil. Was twenty eight dollars for assessment of a hundred and forty, was that correct? It's a, this is twenty dollars to tax for every hundred thousand dollars. Assess the value.
So what's a dollar amount of a point two?
Point two is about a hundred and forty dollars. Two times seven fifty. Yeah, maybe a hundred and forty five. Like, again, to come back to, okay, twenty eight dollars more in taxes, doesn't sound like a lot. A hundred and forty thousand dollar assessment, doesn't sound like that is impossible. But if we're looking at a high rate of unemployment and continued issues with. Whatever happens with the next twelve months with COVID, yeah. Difficult, even at twenty eight dollars.
So what are the, what are the cuts you would make or the things you would change?
I'm sorry?
What are the things you would change?
You know, I don't have a detail into the budget to go into that. Those those kinds of things, I think, are the town manager's responsibility to come back and say, these things, I know what. What overall I'd like to have done. But if we need to cut here or cut there, do we save here and nickel and dime each department's budget? I don't think that that's the best way of developing.
Well, I mean, that's my job. I understand, I mean, you tell me what you want to see, but. Create the hole, transfer, raise the taxes, and I'll, I come back with something for that end.
Well, you've done what we asked last week, you've given us a proposal on how you could. Fund this, I still have some issues though with some of the numbers, so. I'm gonna say again, I can't see the town support for education line going up to nine hundred thousand dollars.
That doesn't.
That that is, that was, two hundred of that is the money that is. Not asking the ask, the numbers, the numbers, there's seven hundred and thirty there. That's been mentioned, you still don't like that, I believe. I mean, that, the proposal, Candy mentioned you could put MBR. I mean, I mean, I did that four years ago, I think. And we were still concerned about the financial responsibility of the school that gave the town theoretically some control. But from the manager's point of view. It it doesn't change my bottom line, whether you put it in MBR or you leave it in that. It just changes future prospects of how that money is is appropriated and used.
I would, I would make sure that we keep whatever money in town support for education that equals anything we take out of a lapsing account. Or a fund balance. So if we were to take two hundred from a lapsing account, or two hundred from the fund balance, or two hundred from a capital project or something like that. Then I would be okay with moving the rest of the money to the MBR, but I would not be okay with taking up, making, moving that two hundred or three hundred or. One fifty over, because next year, whoever is on this board next year will be sitting here doing this exact same thing, unless. Because it's not a revow year, people could do things their houses. It's not being taxed now. Taxes don't change every single year, or assessments don't change every year, so it's not gonna be a new grant list other than cars. People can't buy new cars now because they can't make them, because they don't have the semi ticket inducer chip. So the grant list growth will be what the grant list growth is to cover things, but there needs to be, you know, some. Some places that you you still can do things with, otherwise you'll back yourself into a. You back yourself into a hole where next year, at the same time, we're gonna be sitting here and making another difficult decision, whoever's sitting here. You know, it may not be all of us, maybe some of us, for people that are not gonna be here, you know, like I could say, okay, I'm not, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna, you know, do this anymore. And I could say, yeah, take it out of there, take it out of there, yeah, good, let's let's be heroes right now. But, you know, unfortunately, I don't wanna, I don't think we're gonna leave Josh with a mess. Bruce with a mess, so he'll be here, Melanie will still be here, and whoever else is still here from the board, so. So I would just be careful with with the move up to a lapsing of fund balance amount of money.
When we had the discussion, I think the the school board meeting. Budget, there was a question about how you were going to use the stimulus money. And we're gonna use it for projects that would not be reoccurring. I don't, have we come to any of that in terms of our government use?
No.
Okay, so there's gonna be a million something there. That that stimulus money would be used for projects that could be included in this budget that are one-time shot.
The dilemma with that is there is so much unknown in terms.
I understand that, but but in the next twelve months, we certainly know these things. In fact, we know what we've got in the next six months, that we're first quarter into this budget. And we know we've got a million dollars to be able to use in some projects. That are earmarked with this budget.
We we would, is all I can say at this point, it appears that most of that money is on capital type issues and not recurring expenses. Which is the dilemma that both Mel and I face in terms of trying to anticipate that into an operating budget.
Well, we have a capital improvement. We have lots of items in it. You took a hundred and, what, a hundred and fifty thousand, a hundred and twenty five thousand out of it? That's, that's just a part, part ten percent of the stimulus money that might commit it. The only visibility we have at the moment is what that money, those funds can be used for. Indicates that it has to be either broadband infrastructure, water or sewer infrastructure. That's the only thing that we have right now in terms of describing what that money can be used for. And none of that falls within the general fund. Our general fund expenditure line items or our general fund capital budget. Because water and sewage is controlled by the water and sewage commission, and they have their own revenue structure and. Expenditures and capital plan. And broadband infrastructure.
That's another, that's a big unknown yet.
Haven't we put in this budget to work in communication system and town halls?
It doesn't fit that. That's not broadband stuff. That's not, I mean, that's a stretch to try to call that broadband.
Maybe five, it's five G technology investment throughout the town.
So if we took the the American Rescue Plan, put the money into capital, then we are still moving. Capital tax money over to a reoccurring expense. So there will be no more, unless you raise taxes or get new things growing in town, there won't be any money. In in the tax account, we'd be all dependent upon. Grant and fund balance. So, or we move it over, so you can move all the capital money over to a reoccurring cost, there just won't be any capital money. So then the roads and the plan for the infrastructure for roads, because we can't possibly do the roads we currently have, the big long, million dollar, million and a half dollar roads. Out of the current budget, and that all has to be worked out, and that will come forward probably in maybe nine, ten months from now, I imagine. But. And then that would have to be worked out to come back in, so you'd be taking out the ability to pay that off. With any existing money, once you take that out of the equation, so.
Bruce, I have a question. It's a theoretical question, so you may not be able to answer it. Say this year is just a a blip. If we were to take the money from the general fund, we are at what, twenty one percent now, and we would go to eighteen percent? We're at twenty point one. Twenty point one, and if we took out the money we talked about earlier, it'd be eighteen? Right now, the town managers discuss it with. So if things went back to normal after this year, and things were the way they were, how long would it take us to get back to that twenty point one percent? If it's possible.
What do you mean by back to normal?
He means by building the fund balance again.
You'd have to have interest, like you can invest the money into rail funds.
There's a whole bunch of.
Primary, the primary source of funds that are approved. Understanding the existing budget. And or having revenues come in higher than what the budget. Now, most of that increase that we've experienced to build that twenty point one percent was because we. We purposefully. Did not count on all the state municipal aid, because a couple of years ago, remember, the state didn't adopt the budget. And they were very late in giving their municipal aid, it was so tenuous as to whether or not the state would come through with what they promised. So we set up a, what we call a allowance for unrealized municipal revenue. And that number that we had up there was kind of like a little reserve, but we fully reduced that to zero. We are now counting, this budget now counts on everything that the governor budget says is coming, plus what the legislature is. Is doing in terms of revising the pilot program for various communities, including. A community like Winchester, where we get more private money than what we have in traditional. So we're taking pretty much, assuming our most optimistic. Outlook for municipal red, or municipal aid from the state. And we don't have any of those places where we get the revenues, we're not gonna produce. Of fund balance increase that they have in the past several years. So the only place that we can do is this, we just don't spend everything that we've appropriated to the departments, they come in.
So we 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 lucked up more on the revenue side.
Yes, so basically your answer would be year.
Yes.
I don't think based on the forecast, we'd ever get back.
I I would agree with you, Andy, I think that the, it's gonna be very difficult to ever get back to twenty point one percent.
I don't agree with that. But that's because I'm optimistic, we're about to have a new school, we've got a better school system, we've got better grades, we're attracting more people. We just hired a new town manager, just bought a house and moved in already. I mean, the upside of where we're located as a.
We had a little mini boom here.
Yeah, and so, I mean, we've we've come a long way, I think, in all fairness. And so, I mean, we've, we've come a long way, I think, in all fairness.
I know, but if you look at, but if you look at doing a school bond, right, and then you want to do a road bond, and then you want to do other improvements, we got million-dollar roads to do, just short stretches of them. You know, we've been, we got ash trees coming out from everywhere, out of every street, you know. So we're going to need the mini boom thing and all that progress to keep us level.
Can I ask, Melanie, can I ask you a question, and, and of the town manager? Are there ways that we can increase shared services like IT that would allow us savings between Gilbert, Winchester Public Works, Win, Public Works, schools, and the town?
Of, of, of course. I mean, there's, there's massive software programs that are normally applied to larger organizations than ours. But there, there's all, we're constantly looking ways to integrate and save money. One of the reasons why the Board of Education is located in Town Hall.
Right.
Uh, we look at shared services before, in terms, it could be things we haven't even addressed. Custodial services, other improvements. And there's, right now, we're so busy catching up that we haven't advanced all, but there's more room for integration, I believe there is. And we haven't really, the, the opportunity, I mean, Gilbert's got software, Mel's got software, I've got software. There's, there's uni system, there's software systems out there, but we've got to spend money to do that.
No, I understand. I remember when Dale Martin was the town manager, where Gilbert offered, uh, to share an IT person that may have lowered our costs, I don't really know. So I, I'm just, I'm always thinking of, you know, obviously, IT and how many different systems and everything.
I can probably speak pretty clearly for the school systems, given the shift in technology-driven education right now. I know Gilbert's individual Shane and my individual Joe is, there's, my person's point four, or excuse me, point eight. He works four days a week. He is stretched, and I'm adding him a fifth day, because we just have such a need right now. I'm going to make the assumption that, given how we're operating with technology, that Gilbert's in a very similar boat to what we are, given the fact that they've actually spent a lot more time on distance learning this year than we have. And that just naturally breeds IT issues, um, right of course.
But the IT allows us to consolidate departments within each organization. But that's, that's not a near-term opportunity yet.
The American Rescue Fund could allow that. Beyond broadband, because I think that's, that's something that could be a significant.
So, just a, just a technicality, at seven o'clock, we will no longer be able to Zoom, because planning and zoning will take over. So I'm just throwing that out there. We may have exhausted most everything anyway, but, and Pam won't hesitate to cut me off. They were scheduled first, so. So here we are. So, do you want another meeting this week, or do you want to wait until Monday? Because we only work best when the pressure's on, so Monday will give us like four days, so. What do y'all want to do?
Well, what's going to happen between now and then? What, what kind of direction do we give them?
I don't know, Jack, what do you want to give them?
Consideration is the board that is meeting on Tuesday night.
Tuesday night isn't tomorrow, or next Tuesday?
Next Tuesday night.
The twentieth.
Yeah, so.
Or the nineteenth. And we have until the twenty-third to make last adjustments.
Right, that's a Friday. And we'd have to have it done by like that morning, so Sheila could get it out.
Right.
Well, unless we're prepared to give Bob direction right now in terms of, look at transfers, where would you find X number of dollars? Uh, then there's no reason to have another meeting before Monday.
No reason not to have a meeting?
Well, there's no reason to have a meeting if, if, unless we just want to think about everything we've heard tonight and come back and make a decision, then do it before this week is over, but, uh.
Melissa's text me and asked us to reconsider the point-two mill increase. So I guess, I guess that's where the-
I, I would, you know, I, I agree with most of what Jack says, uh, even about taking the, the, the fund balance down a little, little more to sixteen point. But, uh, when you say you don't see a tax increase, I'm willing to look at the point-two. Are you willing to look at the point-two and still take money from the, uh, general fund? Well, yeah, I don't, I, I don't know how you're going to do it otherwise.
So I guess one direction Bruce and Bob will be to look at the general fund and where it could plug into one-time costs on the, on the town side.
All right.
Which I imagine are going to be the capital items, you'd have to go back through the capital items, also maybe cut some more things. Or just fund it all out of capital, and then next year hope that, uh, we get more money in it. Otherwise, the capital items in town will take the hit.
Okay, so I've got fund balance usage, I U reduction, two-mill increase, point-two.
Well, I don't, I don't think, if we're taking money out of the general fund, I don't think we do a point-two. I, I really don't. I think, I mean, we could look-
It's going to be a very hard sell to do both.
I, I, I know, yeah. So, I mean,
all right.
But I also don't think, uh, if you take it out of the general, and then the other question for this board is, do we meet the five-eighty-one? I mean, that's the other direction that has to be made tonight. Is do we meet somewhere between two-fifty and five-eighty-one? Where do you want to be for the schools? And Steve, I know you got a-
I have an opinion, but I'm not going to express it.
Five-thirty-one.
Five-thirty-one, is it?
Yes, five-thirty-one.
It's two-eighty-one and two-fifty.
Okay, two-eighty-one now. So, so where do you want to be with that? Between the two-fifty and, uh, five-thirty-one? Todd and Jack, you wanted to support the school, so where do you want to be?
Well, I'm going to say again, I don't support adding more money to the town support. But I'd see it going into the MBR line.
It's the same thing, it's a dollar. It's a dollar, where is it going to go? How much of it? How much of that two? Between the two-fifty and the five-thirty-one, how much more? Or stay at two-fifty?
I'm not sure at this point. I need, I need to think through some more of these issues, because it's just a hard sell either way. And-
Right, but in order to, I guess, then Bruce and Bob, you're going to have to do some scenarios.
Yeah, like, what if, yeah.
Like a three-hundred, like two-fifty to three-hundred, two-fifty to three-fifty, two-fifty to four-hundred, um, and that, and then what the corresponding, uh, either fund balance hole, or capital item, or expense on the town side it would come from.
But maybe what we should have, at least as a consensus, is whether we as a board feel that the general fund balance can be brought down to sixteen percent, or stay at the eighteen. I mean, that, to me, if we make that decision or have that kind of consensus, we give better direction to Bruce and Bob. But if we're willing to sit here and say, yeah, I'm okay with bringing the fund balance to sixteen percent, then we should make that consensus and give them that direction. If we're not in agreement with that, then they should know that, too.
Well, so we're not going to go below sixteen.
Not talking about going below, but-
Right, so that's a, that's a hard line. We're not going below sixteen. So anything else is up for grabs.
Sixteen or sixteen point seven.
Sixteen point seven.
So we're not going below the sixteen point seven, it's a hard debt. Right?
Correct.
All right, so if we do that, and so you take all the money between wherever we are now to sixteen point seven, where is it going? What's the offset? And then, one of the things that, uh, everybody has to know is that next year, if you take that, and there's no infusion at the end of this year, because don't forget, at the end of the past few years, we've been sending huge amounts of money over to public works to do roads. Like huge amounts. And the transfers, there won't be those kind of transfers. But if we do those transfers, they won't be going into a fund balance. Because that's where some of the money came out to do some of this was, would be left at the end of the year. And then it would come back in the budget next year as a transfer out of fund balance.
I think we may be sitting here in a year from now, some of us, if we're still here, and, and saying, okay, we're in a better financial situation in twenty-two, twenty-three budget, to say, okay, we can do a half-mill increase, or we can do an increase, because we haven't done one in five or six years.
We're going to have to do one anyway, for the roads, to buy the roads.
You're going to have to have a bond-
We're going to have to increase-
You're going to have-
We're going to have some kind of an increase.
Yes, you will.
Yes, you will, guaranteed.
And, and is that the bond, bonding, are you thinking next year? Or is it, is it two years ahead?
It's probably two, you might, you probably want to do it next year. You're probably going to want to do something next year.
Yes.
With, with the schools, too?
Yes.
Well, with the schools, hopefully, we can supplant one for the other. So the bond, the, the increase is going to be, is really much heavier on the roads than it is the schools.
Well, what's happening now is people want roads done.
Yes.
And, so like South Road, people are always saying things about South Road. That's like, what, a million and a half, million dollars to do South Road?
Yep.
Upper Hollerbird is what, another million?
Another million.
We, we're getting a million, but Upper Hollerbird is a million. Newfields, got to be what, up to a million and a half?
Oh, yeah, two million, maybe.
East, West Wakefield's a million-dollar road, East Wakefield's a two-million-dollar road. So you can't do it in the budget, because there's not enough money in the capital account right now to cover even one of those roads in one year. And then the more we take out, there are less available, it's going to be for the small roads and the small things that happen. So, so, yeah, so if we, a year from now, you do a bond to cover the major, big, huge roads that you can't do through a budget, then you got to pay for that. And, and so, yeah, so it's complicated. And then, I'm assuming, because it's happened every year, that Gilbert School has asked us for an increase, and we've covered that every year for the past however many years. The schools are now in a, and out of their grant money and stuff, and so the pre-K to six special ed transportation piece of the budget's going to ask for more money next year, too. So it's not like they're going to be flat going forward, it's not like the town side, we already know, there's what, employees is what, like a hundred and ninety-five, hundred and eighty thousand-dollar raise? Ninety-five thousand-dollar raises, something like that, as a, as a whole?
Nine.
Ninety, about, ninety-nine.
Right, so we, we're already looking at, next year in the forecast, without a bond, without spending any big amounts of money, we're already
Yeah, but-
Four-hundred.
We've, we've got to be careful that we don't pit department against department, school against school kind of thing.
Right.
I mean, the police have needs, the public works has needs, everybody has needs. But when you look back, as proud as we are of the fact that we haven't raised taxes, you know, we find ourselves in a big hole regarding roads. Our schools, the, the roofs leak.
Yep.
Bachelor School needs, well, you, you know, everybody knows where that is. The, the Police Department, you know, you did some upgrades, but until you got here, it, it was an absolute disgrace. And it still needs help.
The one building is a hundred and thirty years old, so that contributes to it.
So when you look back at the, the hole we're in regarding all of these things, there's a reason we are, because we didn't spend a little as we went along. And, uh, it's time to start spending a little as we go along.
And sell, selling our assets.
I'm not sure what you meant by that.
Bank of America, Bachelor.
Oh, okay.
We have assets, we have another building on Main Street, so we really need to, we don't need to be landlords. We need to turn that into money.
We can talk ourselves into all the things that could go wrong. And sometimes they do go wrong, and you adjust. You know, we're homeowners, sometimes the roof leaks, you fix the leak. If it needs a new roof, hopefully you've got a rainy day fund. And if you don't, you know, and if the boiler goes the same time the roof goes, you got to, you know, something's got to happen. And as a town, we're in the same kind of situation right now. Something's got to happen, you got to take, make decisions based on not knowing everything there is to know. I think we know a heck of a lot. I'm impressed that, that Bruce is able to put together information like he has for us. It's wonderful guidance, but tough decision here. And I think we're at a point where a point-two will sell in the town.
Melissa's talking about four-fifty for education in the text.
I was thinking five. Into the MBR.
Into the MBR, all of it?
Five.
And the other rest remains in town support for education?
Yeah, I was thinking. I don't know if that makes sense.
I mean, there was a reason we kept it out of MBR, and that reason might be passe.
So, I, I think we need to-
I just want to comment, Steve, with, Steve, you know, you're right. Any other year, we probably should have added a little bit more to the, to the tax rate, any other year. And I think had this past year not been like it had been, I would agree that even a two perc, a, a point-two or a point-four percent would be something we should all be able to handle after so many years. It's just been a tough year for lots and lots of people. Fortunately, it hasn't hit me, but it has hit people I know. And they're in difficult situations, and I don't want to be here as a member of this board saying, hey, we're going to make it a little bit more difficult for you. I can see the potential next year getting by all of this. And had we not been in this, uh, this entire lockdown for the last year, I'd agree, it's about time we started adding money to pay for the things. I think that's what we can think about in terms of the stimulus money, how we can use that. But I just don't think it's the right year, this time around.
Jack, um, and Bruce, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but it looks like this year we collected more taxes than we did last year.
I, I think you got to look at, it's not a-
Sales of houses, too.
There's a lot of things that affect that. I mean, we, we had a high tax rate last year, we're main, they're maintaining a high tax collection rate. It's the assessment that becomes, the, the collection is, is high. We got to make sure that we're assessing everything properly.
Am I reading this thing correctly? It says-
Collections this year through nine months are higher than they were last year.
That really does-
Some of that is just because of the grant list growth for one year and overall tax living.
So that's, that's always built into the budget.
In all, I, I think we've been affected, people have been affected, but I think-
And I think it's also important, in the past, I'd like to think, maybe that's my own self-interest, that in the past five years, we've progressed a lot with the money we've had.
Yes, we have.
And, and, but we know we played a lot of catch-up. But at some point in time, we're still dealing with legacy issues from twenty years ago. And so, and those are coming to roost, those birds are coming, we're going to have to start fixing stuff. And we have been, but you're right, at some point in time, how much is, how much do you keep doing? But we need to do more.
So I'd like to have a meeting on Thursday.
This Thursday?
This Thursday, five o'clock.
Here?
Yep, unless we can get back into Town Hall.
It doesn't look likely by Thursday, I'm sorry.
So we're not going to do that, we're going to do that.
Be having a finance-
We're going to have this finance-
All right, so it'll be a larger finance.
No, it's going to just be a regular, special meeting.
Thursday, at what time?
Five o'clock. Because I think we're going to be in the same conversation on, on Thursday, and I don't want to have that conversation on Monday, because we'll be running out of time. We'll run out of time if we do this again on Monday.
What, what information will we have in our hands before that?
Well, you, you told us what you wanted to see, fund balance use, if we do that, or point-two mill increase. If we use the fund balance not below sixteen point seven, and how much of the five-thirty-one above the two-fifty, would, do you want to increase? That's what I've got so far. And of course, there's a lot of things to go with that, how it's going to affect the capital we present to you, depends on, you want options.
Mel, is there any way that you could have a special board meeting prior to your next meeting to talk about this, uh, use of the two-hundred thousand?
Prior to your Thursday night meeting?
Yeah.
I can inquire with my board.
I mean, could you get a census? Could you bring that to us and say, yeah, we've got a census of the board that this is about, okay?
I can do some work, but I'd rather have my full board there to be able to have a discussion, so I'll see if I can pull together a meeting between now and Thursday.
So are you asking for them to make, put in the two-hundred thousand?
Well, this whole question, as she, Mel said, it's the Board of Education's decision to use the, uh, non-lapsing of- And I'd just like to get a sense of that, are we gonna have opposition from the Board of Ed or, yeah, they're okay with that?
I think it's also number dependent, because there's a big difference between. Two hundred and eighty one thousand and something less than that. So I think that's why I was hoping that you guys would be able to provide Mayor Perez with some additional thoughts around what the number is, is that. You're kind of circling right now, because then I could go and have a more informed conversation about what is a realistic number. That I could present to them.
That's true.
But the other thing is too, is like if Melanie wanted to put all her money in and we didn't have to adjust anything else, we'd all probably say, yeah, okay. And then we'll leave the hole for next year. So, I mean, I I think, I mean, that's like just normal nature of things, okay, yeah, great, you can put in the two hundred and eighty one. Good, we're off the hook and there we go.
And that's been my concern all along, is I know what our increases will need to be, you know, on average for next year. Putting almost a three hundred thousand dollar deficit ahead of next year. Creates a really large problem for us and that's why it it's really a difficult place to be. Because it's not money that we can just, like if I supplant two hundred and eighty one thousand dollars this year. There's not two hundred and eighty one thousand dollars in that account for next year to be able to continue that supplanting, so.
Yep. And then we start looking at tax increases.
Correct.
Get it? I get that.
I make a motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor? Yeah, all Thursday, I'm gonna get out of the, out of the little Zoomy thing. Although I told Pam to cut me off.